May thirteenth, twenty nineteen, the order and the first order of business is the invocation and the pledge.
Almighty God, we thank you for the freedom to meet and to make decisions and discuss the business of the town. We ask that you would be with those who are hurting or sick, or who have lost loved ones, God, in the spring season. Thank you for the rain and the change of the seasons. Help us to make good and just and fair decisions. In your son, Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Mary, you want to lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we do have quite a full agenda tonight, and we do have two public hearings, one at four fifteen for the ordinance number one ninety for charter, chapter sixty-two development fee impact, uh, development impact fees, and one at four thirty for the public hearing on the site plan approval for Clark's Rest self-storage facility. So, we'll get started with the regular meeting and then break up at four fifteen and four thirty to go into those. Okay, so you should have received a copy of the minutes from last month.
I move. Um, I move to approve the April eighth, twenty nineteen minutes as presented.
Motion, do we have a second?
A second.
Second, and any further, any comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Okay. And, Mary, we've got a proclamation for Val Deptula from Good Earth Natural Foods for twentieth anniversary. So, come on up if you would, and Mary's gonna give you the proclamation.
You want me to read it, right?
Yes, yes.
Uh, I hereby proclaim, "The Good Earth Natural Food Company at Lenartown was established by Valerie Deptula and opened their doors on May fifth, nineteen ninety-nine, determined to make a difference. And whereas Good Earth's motto, 'Where Good Things Happen,' is dedicated to their customers experiencing their belief in natural foods and sustainable practices. And whereas owner Valerie Deptula decided early on that it was important to exercise dedicated civic commitment by encouraging and supporting community programs, advisory boards, service clubs, and many charitable and philanthropic causes, as working with these organizations ensures she, Good Earth, and her staff consciously live their mission with integrity, passion, and conviction. And whereas over the past twenty years, the prosperity of the Good Earth thrives on the resources experienced judgment, stability, and foresight of its community. And whereas the Good Earth is a landmark in Lenartown, is considered a food point of our town. Now therefore, we, the commissioners of Lenartown, hereby proclaim the Good Earth Natural Foods Company at Lenartown, an outstanding store of civic pride and community spirit on this twentieth anniversary, and thank them for making Lenartown the proud home of their establishment."
Thank you so much. All right, then, just one comment. The store was actually started in ninety-six by Susan Fabian, and then it was bought in ninety-eight, and then I bought it in ninety-nine, so.
And done very well. Started out as a small place in the Duke Building and moved over to the building that she's in now, and then recently purchased the building also, so congratulations.
We hope to be here for many, many, many years.
Very good.
Thank you for all that you've done for the town.
You're welcome. Thank you for being a community member.
Okay, Rebecca Treasor's report, please.
I will start with the April financial information that was in your packet. I did not transfer any money to or from the checking account to the local government investment pool during April, and we are eighty-four percent through the budget year. If you have any questions on specific line items, I don't have any comments to make about the report. I will say that I sent reminder tax notices as a courtesy to customers at the end of April, and that helps when it comes time to put together the tax sale listing at the end of November. So, it does generate a fair bit of payment activity, so it cuts down on work.
Sure, sure. How many are you at right now that haven't been paid?
We've had a number of payments, and I haven't done a good to know exactly. So, on the agenda is introduction of ordinance one ninety-one, and the charter does require that the annual budget be adopted by ordinance. It also requires an ordinance be introduced before it's adopted. So, since we are on schedule to have a public hearing for the budget in June, and then thereafter adopt the budget ordinance, this does need to be introduced today. Right now, and obviously we have not had a budget workshop, the ordinance is introduced with the current tax rate of point one two six six cents. The other item on the agenda is to award the audit contract, and a fair amount of work is required in order to do this. We kept our current, our previous audit firm for quite a number of years. They no longer will be doing this type of audit service, so we were at a point of needing to rebid the work. So, in your packet was a very detailed summary of the steps that were taken to get us to this point. But I'll briefly highlight that we received ten proposals. The committee, which consisted of the mayor, the administrator, and myself, did the, we reviewed all the technical proposals independently of one another and separate from the price proposals. So, I included in your packet a summary of the price proposals that were opened after we all scored each submission, and I also gave you a sample of the scoring sheet, so you had an idea of what we were looking for. After that exercise was done, the top three point-getters were called for references, and then the committee got back together. We reviewed those references and made the decision to recommend award to BBD. The proposal asks for five years worth of pricing, but we're, we are wording the contract, so it's the first year, and then we have five one-year options. So, if we aren't pleased with the first year, we aren't obligated for five years. So, the committee is asking the council to approve that recommendation.
And I might add that this, the, the cost is actually less than what we've been paying previously.
Quite, quite a bit, yes.
What was our cost per share?
It was around a couple thousand dollars.
Comments, questions?
So, that was for one year, these are, you know, their bids are?
That's total for five years.
For five years, okay, that's just making sure.
Yes. The first year, the price for the one that we've asked you to approve was nineteen thousand five hundred.
Um, and then to my last question, so they weren't the lowest. What, what bumped them ahead of the lowest bid?
Um, references.
References?
Yes, ma'am.
And Rebecca did a significant amount of work putting this together and doing the laywork, getting the packets ready and everything, so appreciate that.
I was quite surprised we got ten proposals. The county only received four.
We'll add with the Lindsey, the lowest bidder, they, they do a number of towns in Maryland, but they've got, what, like twenty-five towns?
I, I didn't count the number, but we all have the same fiscal year-end, and with the smaller staff, there's some struggles getting every one of the work done on time.
Are we saying that the, Mary, you're saying the one that we're looking into is the one that does a lot of municipalities?
No, no, the lowest bidder.
Oh, that, okay.
Did a lot of municipalities.
Now, this one here?
This one actually does, um, North Beach.
Okay. And I'm assuming we also inquired with them as a reference? Okay.
Do you know where they're located?
Out of Philadelphia.
Okay, I move to award the audit contract to BBD LLP for one year with four one-year extensions per the April thirtieth, twenty nineteen bid results.
I second the motion.
And any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
We have time running, so.
Uh, well, it is, well, what, you have just one more item?
Budget amendments.
Okay, yeah, why don't we go ahead and do that?
Okay. All right, so I've talked in previous councilman and meetings about the need to perhaps do some budget amendments, and this is ultimately, I think, the only batch I'll have to bring to. I don't anticipate anything in June, but there are three that do need council approval. The first one is to recognize that during this fiscal year, the town, on behalf of St. Mary's County, did receive a two-hundred-thousand-dollar parks and playground grant, and that was passed through to Rock and Parks for a playground that was built. So, this just, it, it never appeared in the budget, because the year that we were awarded the grant, the budget was already approved, and then it was pushed back a year. So, the timing of it really didn't work out until now that we recognize it as a budget item. The second budget is to recognize that we have sold one of the profit building condos, and recognizing that our actual property tax revenue is higher than budget. But those are offset by what I predict to be deficits in income tax revenue, accommodation tax revenue, and the difference has to be funded with fund balance. The difference goes into fund balance for this budget amendment. The third budget amendment actually takes money out of fund balance, and if you look at the amounts, they're almost identical, but for reporting purposes, it's important to show your revenues as accurately as possible and your expenditures as accurately as possible. So, the net difference to fund balance is insignificant, but we'll see these major changes in the revenue and expense accounts. So, the third one is carryover for project funding across fiscal years. So, we just need to recognize, and most of this was budgeted in the previous year, but in order for it to display on our budget reports, I have to show the money's being carried forward.
Any questions for Rebecca?
So, it was like prior-approved money, it just didn't, rolling it over?
Yes.
On the second budget amendment, the first line item, it says to establish the revenue source for the sale of the profit building condo.
Yes.
Um, don't we already have an other income line item under the general?
We do, and that does show actual receipts into an other income amount, but this amount was not budgeted, because there was no firm date for a sale. So, I didn't budget for that income until we knew the sale was happening. So, what this one eighty-two will do is add to the previously approved budget on your financial report.
Um, did we budget for that last year? Did we, we expected for it to sell sooner than it did.
It never showed up in a budget report.
Okay.
But we expected it to sell before now, yes.
Well, I guess I, I would prefer for that line item to see the original budget and the actual, so that, I guess we had a, a difference there, a significance difference, so if there was a question, we would know exactly, I guess, where it, it came from. So, it would show up as an unbudgeted line item, because we really didn't, I don't think we built our budget based on the sale of, of that condo.
No, we did not. But the charter does require that the budget be balanced. So, if I don't recognize a revenue source when I know it's actually gonna happen, we're gonna show a deficit in the general fund overall, which is a violation of the charter.
But this one was, this one was additional income, not additional expense. So, it would show a surplus that, that we had on, that was on plan.
Right, but, but this also offsets the additional expenses on the next page. So, the net effect to fund balance is insignificant, but if I didn't recognize this income and I only recognize the extra expenses, then we would have a shortfall for the general fund.
Well, I guess my point is that the money will come in as income and show up under the actual line item, regardless of whether we make an amendment to the budget, correct?
Right, but when you're looking, we operate on a budgetary basis, so if your budget isn't balanced, that's a violation of the charter in technical terms. So, you always want to have as much revenue budgeted as you have expenditures budgeted.
In this case, we have more revenue than we budgeted, so.
You have more actual revenue, and you can show a surplus at the end.
I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, from a budgetary standpoint.
If we go forward with the third budget amendment to, to amend, um, what we planned to spend, then it wouldn't, it wouldn't balance, because it would've showed that we, we planned to spend more than.
Yes.
What we're bringing in.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Anyone care to make a motion?
I move to approve budget amendments BJ zero one nineteen, BJ, BJ zero two dash nineteen, and BJ zero three dash nineteen as presented.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Thank you very much. Okay, so we'll go ahead and move to the public hearing for ordinance one ninety.
Close the regular.
Yeah, we need a motion to close the regular meeting and open the public hearing.
Sub move.
I'll second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, last month, we introduced ordinance number one ninety, chapter sixty-two, development impact fees, increasing the water impact fee. Based on findings of the twenty-nineteen water capacity management plan, which was presented to you all at the March twelfth meeting by our engineers at GHD, we're gonna be required to build a new well and water tower, water storage tank to support planned growth. Funding for growth-related projects are paid for by impact fees. The water impact, impact fee is currently eighteen hundred dollars and has been in effect since two thousand and four. The sewer impact fee is thirteen thousand, which was set in two thousand and six. The new water impact fee that we are proposing would be three thousand dollars. This hearing was advertised in the County Times on April eighteenth and on the town website, and we have not received any comments. Um, I would just point out that it's amending, uh, ordinance number one ninety is amending section, uh, chapter sixty-two, the development impact fees, and, um, it would be, it would affect projects that, um, had not received any building permits prior to April first of this year. So, um, this would be for new development at Meadows and other smaller projects that would come forward in the future.
And increasing the impact fees guarantees that the current residents and, and businesses don't have to pay for the additional infrastructure that's needed for the future growth.
So, as, so, so as of today's day, we had not received any public comment about.
Okay, so I'd open it up to the public floor if there's any comments.
When, when does this take effect? Oh, sorry.
It takes effect twenty days after we pass it.
Twenty days, so anyone, twenty days.
Well, but it's worded in the ordinance that if you had, if, if projects had not pulled the building permit by April first of this year. Then they would be required to pay the new impact fee.
So, from April first?
So, for instance, Meadows has pulled a couple building permits, but they don't pay until, um, U and, UNO.
Gotcha.
So, and they're well aware that, that it's gonna be at the new impact fee.
Okay.
But previous approved projects would still be under the old impact fee.
Okay, let me, uh, again, open it up to the public. Any public comments, questions? Okay, hearing none. Go ahead and make, entertain.
We have to open the regular meeting again?
Yeah, entertain a motion to close the public hearing and open the regular meeting.
Sub move.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now we're back to the regular meeting. So, let's get back to, let's see, planning.
Um, we, we can, we need to make a motion to approve the ordinance.
Okay, well, I thought we'd do that once we got to your agenda, or we can do it now, that's, that's fine.
Oh, okay, okay, that's fine, we can do it that way.
Okay, that's, yeah, let's just stick to the regular agenda. Okay, planning department?
Okay, Jade is not here.
Yeah.
Um, we had an April fifteenth planning commission meeting, and they heard the Clark's Rest, um, um, storage facility, um, project and made a recommendation to you all, and you have copies of those minute, draft minutes in your packets, and we heard the case for the Woods subdivision on Greenbrier that you all awarded EDUs to last month, and they did get approval to subdivide the, the lot that was on Greenbrier. And right now, we don't have any cases for the May meeting, so we don't plan on having a planning commission meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Sal Christie earlier, is she here? Yep.
Yes, sir.
Anything you want to add to your report? Everyone should've gotten a copy of your report.
I was gonna say, there's a lot in there, and, uh, there's a lot coming in May, between the prescription take backs, that we're gonna do active shooter training with Cetera Lane with the staff, and, and then we have career days for a bunch of schools in town coming up, and, um, we have project graduation last week of May, which is a long, long week.
Yes. Can just imagine. All right, it's great to have you back, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Christie?
Um, I said, one, just curious, the, uh, active shooter at Cetera Lane, what time, do you have a timeframe on that, time it'll start?
Um, one thirty.
One thirty, okay. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, um, all right, well, let's go to your report. We still have a couple minutes for the, uh, we'll go ahead and finish up the.
Ordinance, okay.
Impact fees.
So, we had the, um, the public hearing, and we introduced the ordinance for one ninety last month, um, and so you all are able to take action on it this month.
Any questions?
So, I'll move to approve ordinance number one ninety, chapter sixty-two, development impact fees, increasing the water impact fee to three thousand dollars.
I second.
Okay, um, further discussion?
Um, this seems to be a, um, a little bit of a policy change, um, based on the comments that we received from the, um, the auditors of the last few years. Um, we have not made the decision to go forward with the two percent increase to the customer base, um, the fees every year, and I know that's something that our auditors brought up, um, and so, that's something that we passed by ordinance, so I think there's a little bit of a, um, I guess you'd say, disagreement between that ordinance still being in place and us not keeping up with that two percent, basically because we didn't need to. I mean, we budgeted well, um, we spent well, and, and we didn't need the additional fee income, and so now it seems we're shifting from when that ordinance was put in place, which I think was before any of us were here. I, I don't remember the date.
And what impact fees are completely separate from the residential, um.
Service fees.
Service fees.
Definitely, but, but that ordinance has been in place since before any of us were here, and, and the decision has been made on, uh, pretty much every year to not make that increase, um, whereas for the sewer fees, we've made that increase every year, and so it seems like there's a, a little bit of a shifting.
Yeah.
To, um, depend on the, the impact fees that have all, you know, those have been in place for, um, almost as long as that two percent, uh, increase that was put into the fee for the.
Two percent was a lot longer. This, um, this impact fee was changed in two thousand and six, I'm sorry, two thousand and four. The last time we changed the sewer was in two thousand and six, and they were all done by ordinance, but it's a separate ordinance. Um, impact fees come under chapter, um, sixty-two, where the, uh, ordinance you're referring to is specifically to service fees.
I, I understand they're different ordinances, I just, um, it seems like we made the decision not to go forward with, with the fee increases on the, the service side, but now we're going forward with an increase on the impact fee for the new development, and.
Because it's a different pot of money, and we have just got in March the, uh, Water Sewer Master Plan Report that shows that we do have a need for the well and the water storage tank, and new growth pays for those items so that current residents don't. So, it doesn't have, so the impact fees keep us for, from affecting the other fee that you're talking about.
Mm-hmm.
So, they're not tied together at all.
I, I understand, um, I'm just, I'm questioning whether we should, um, from a policy standpoint, go forward with maybe repealing the fee, um, increased ordinance that we haven't kept up with before we would make a decision to increase the development impact fees. But I, I understand they're not directly related, but they are all, um, enterprise fund money.
And you all do make a decision each year when you go through passing the budget of whether you're going to do the increase on the service charges.
And I'll be handing these out to you after the meeting, and, and it addresses that in this coming budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions, sir? Anyone care to make a motion?
I'm move to approve ordinance number one ninety, chapter sixty-two, development impact fees, increasing the water impact fee to three thousand dollars.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
One nay. Thank you very much. Okay, let's go, we'll need another motion to close the regular meeting and open the public hearing for the final sale, site plan for Clark's Rest Storage.
Sub move. Second.
Second by Commissioner Manningham. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, the case before you today is case fourteen dash oh five point five. Lenartown Self-Storage two-five-eight-five-zero Point Lookout Road as part of the Clark's Rest Planned Unit Development. They're requesting final site plan approval for a self-storage facility. The Clark's Rest PUD received its final approval in February of twenty twelve, which included commercial spaces on Route Five. Um, today, the applicant is requesting the, um, final site plan approval for a ninety-seven thousand, three hundred and twenty-two square foot self-storage facility. The facility will consist of one three-story building with an office, a second one-story building, and a paved boat and recreational, um, vehicle storage area. Due to the location of the facility, town staff had, uh, previously requested additional buffers.
buffering on all sides of the facility, and additional lighting in the boat and RV storage area. The developer has added those requests to their site plan that you have today. There's an additional thirty-six thousand square foot set aside for future expansion in the northeast corner if needed. Required parking for the, for the facility has been met. It's required for the number of employees in the office area. They've actually exceeded that with six designated parking spaces. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed the project on April fifteenth and indicated concern with the size and architectural aspects of the three-story building. Since then, the architect has lowered the parapet number four by three feet, dropped the cornice line at parapet number two to visually lower the height of the building and remove some of the decor at the third level to downplay the height of the building. The wise wall sign, which wasn't part of the motion, was reduced to the hundred square foot to meet the, the ordinance requirements, which that will be a separate permit. Prior to the issuance of building permit, fire marshal approval would be obtained. We did advertise this public hearing in the County Times on April twenty-fifth, as well as posting on our website. I included in your packet the minutes from the February twelfth meeting, twenty-twelve meeting, where they received their final site plan approval. Also, draft minutes from the April fifteenth Planning Commission meeting. You have some architecturals and a site plan, and we have Mr. Rick Bailey here today that's gonna do a small presentation and answer your questions. And just to show, so Route Five is down here, and this is the frontage here. This is the housing development. It has separate entrances from the residential. Here's Route Five, here's the entrance to the residential portion, and then we're talking about this site right here, which has separate entrance, right at twenty o'clock.
Let me actually ask the, this is the public portion of the hearing, so let me ask.
They do a presentation for.
First, okay. Yes, sir. Welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, again, I'm Rick Bailey, one of the partners in this project for the development of the commercial portion for Clark's Rest. And as you know, I'll try to step aside so everybody hopefully can see it. Maybe it's a little bit awkward over here. As we were, as it was explained to you earlier, Route Five is here. This is the main entrance off of Route Five into the Clark's Rest development. I'd like to give you a little bit of the history of how we've gotten to this point with where we felt this was the most appropriate use for this parcel at the same time. One thing that attracted us to the Clark's Rest property was not just the residential size of what could be developed and the variety of residential components in it, but we viewed this frontage along Route Five as a critical component that would be important for us to develop commercially and important for the town also. Unfortunately, you can see, we only have one small parcel left. Originally, we were hoping to incorporate the majority of this long Route Five for commercial development as part of the PUD, such that we would have had an access point to come in off of the main road into the entrance of the subdivision of Clark's Rest. Unfortunately, due to wetland delineations and buffers, and working with M D E, we ended up being left with this small parcel only that we could work with. So that's a reason it's a little bit isolated, and that's a reason the entrance to this site is strictly off of Route Five at the same time. And when we started the development of Clark's Rest, we started exploring their different possible uses for the commercial site. And our company, Mark, over the years has developed over six hundred and some thousand square feet of retail, office, industrial type of uses in various portions of southern Maryland, including three self-storage projects which we still own, have developed, and still manage at the same time. We approached a number of potential commercial users for this site, including people such, or entities such as Starbucks, Dunkin' Donuts, Burger King, things of this nature which we thought would be well-received and potential users for the site. Unfortunately, we were rejected by each of them, and the reason for that is, is that those type of businesses are looking for access points off of controlled intersections, or major intersections or junction points off of Route Five specifically. Hopefully, in not-too-distant future, there will be a traffic light here. If we could have had an access point off of that, we probably would have been able to attract one of those type of users. So, as we worked through that list and narrowed it down, then we decided, well, what are the other possible users? We were approached by a dollar store and a discount food store. Each of those, we did not like in terms of the use for the property for two, two reasons. The traffic generation that would be required for both of them, both of them that are not architecturally attractive. One particularly proposes using metal buildings and so forth for their structures, and we just didn't think that was going to be compatible within the overall commercial development design for the future of the town, plus the proximity to the neighborhood. So we rejected those ideas and turned down those offers. We were looking for something that would be a permitted use, of which self-storage is, or we would call it consolidated storage. And we wanted something that was a low-traffic generator. It didn't have a lot of traffic counts, a lot of traffic trips, morning, afternoon, things of this nature. Something that could be compatible with the area, and this is going to be a majority climate-controlled facility, of which there's none within this immediate area. You have to go outside Leonardown in order to get climate control, and that's where the industry's going at this point in time. More and more of it is climate-controlled, because people recognize the value of that for the storing, storage of their valuable items, and what humidity, and the lack of humidity control does to damage things over a period of time. We felt that the self-storage facility would be architecturally attractive at the same time, too. Masonry construction, some glass with it, and things of nice mansard, some architectural appeal, some coping and so forth, rather than just a square box and so forth. So that's where we ultimately decided upon self-storage as being the best use for the site. When we came to that conclusion, then we consulted with the architect that we worked with, that predominant, and their predominant design that they do are self-storage facilities. Were able to get a concept design from them, and then we sent letters to, at that point in time, we sent two groups of letters, on the fourth of October and the eighth of October, to then all the residents of Clark's Rest. There's a hundred and eighteen letters that we sent out at that time, and I'd like to, I'll just, this is a representative copy. Just one, each of them was individual, this is a copy for everybody.
Okay.
Each of us individually addressed to every homeowner, and it gave the history of the site. I gave, listed things I've just spoken of, of what we were looking for in appropriate use, and the type of users that we were not able to attract to the site at the same time. I thought that would be helpful for your reference at the same time. We got three responses to that. One homeowner volunteered to help support a, a traffic signal, but you're not going to get a traffic signal at a location like this.
Right.
In order to try to attract another type of user, which they felt would be more desirable, like a Starbucks, Dunkin' Donuts, or something of that nature. We had one homeowner who questioned why there would be a commercial site within the development of Clark's Rest, and we explained to them that this is a PUD that combines a variety of users, uses within the parcel. And we did have one homeowner who didn't like self-storage, and we felt that was a good representation in terms of, that overall it was supported, that we, that we did not hear objections to it at the same time. My partner Marvin Ausler conducts homeowner, informal homeowner ad hoc committee meetings every month or every other month, depending upon the time of the year, in conjunction with the pool committee and the clubhouse committee. They've been brought up to them, representatives at that point, in terms of whether or not they were interested in supporting it or whatever, and it's been well-received with them at the same time, too. It brings us then to the point that we completed our design, and we went to the planning commission, and you heard the reports in terms of what their comments and feedback was. We were almost to the, if I'm not mistaken, it was the maximum building height within the town of Leonardown, which I think is forty-five feet, if I'm not mistaken. We were almost to that. We've lowered it between three and four feet, taken some of that scale down. That was one of the questions or concerns that they had, was the scale of it from looking at, from Route Five. And the reason we need the scale is that with the climate control, it's, it's not spread out for individual warehouses, like a warehouse after warehouse, like was the typical design for generation one, self-storage facilities ten, twenty years ago. And so many other ones that are currently on, fit that type of design of nature. This is consolidated, consolidated into one building, the elevators with inside, loading docks for people to unload, to be able to access and so forth. So we did make those changes from the planning commission, and I think you have representative copies of them. So, that concludes my presentation. I'll be glad to answer any questions, though, if you have any.
Right now, let's ask the, the public for any comments. So, is there any public comment today?
Can we see an elevation of what it will look like from Route Five?
We do have that in our papers.
We don't have a large, you want to come up and look at it, if you'd like, please? This would be a representation looking at, I'm gonna flip this around so you can see the.
Gordon, excuse me, could you state your name and address first?
Oh, Gordon Stelway, two-two-seven-seven Core Adamar Drive in Leonardown.
Was that, so I was speaking, this is the entrance here, the building. So if you were to look at it, this is the architect's representation for this portion of the building, sets back at this point in time.
And then this is, this is an out parcel over here?
No, this is all one parcel. This is strictly a one-story building foundation.
This is.
That's a three-story building, which is less, it's down about forty-one, forty-one and a half feet.
Does it have to be three stories?
In order to get the size we need for the scale, it needs to be that, yes, sir. There's a representation of it, looking from Route Five with the entire perspective of the same.
In my personal opinion, I think three stories is really cool. Personally speaking, I look at the elevation, and it's gonna be this, this monitor. I think three stories, frankly, is pretty cool.
And the reason we need to go to three stories, otherwise you're spreading it out, you're impacting more of the site in order to get the square footage, which is needed for the scale at the same time, too.
It's big scale.
It is. Certainly.
Thank you, Gordon. Any other comments from the public? Okay, hearing none. Did we receive any comments?
We did not receive any public comments.
And there was?
It was advertised in the County Times on April twenty-fifth, and also posted on our website.
And we didn't have any comments at the public hearing for the planning zoning either?
They did not hold a public hearing, but we did not have any comments.
Okay.
They did allow some people to speak on the other issue.
Right.
So if anyone was there, they could have spoken.
Right. Okay. Then I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing and open the regular meeting.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Okay. Any other comments from you? Comments, questions for the, Mr. Bailey?
So you said you were looking for low, low-traffic type uses. Why is that? Were there improvements that were gonna have to be made, that we're gonna?
I think any commercial use that you can hold the traffic count down is a positive for your road trips and so forth, no matter what. This is just a general statement. The higher the traffic generated, like a, like a gas convenience store, or a little farm, blah, blah, they're real high-traffic generators.
Sure.
It concerns us, and looking at it realistically, it's not a controlled intersection. The turning motions in and out, the more that you would have of them, the more problems it would be for traffic on Route Five, and just less number, the better, is what we were thinking.
Gotcha. So there wasn't any, like, state highway requirements that were forcing anything?
No, no, there's nothing along those lines.
You already have your state highway.
Right, that's.
The, the state highway work has already been completed. Their bonds have been released. The entrance is already in place.
Had, had you given any thought to doing like a commercial office building?
There again, that's a lot of high-traffic generators and so forth, too. Our analysis, we've looked at the area before. We feel that the area is well-served currently for office buildings. We have numerous office buildings in other locations. We weren't comfortable thinking that that would be a good use with a reasonable time for lease up within, for the market rate that you can get at this point in time for this location.
I think that's interesting, because I know one of the commercial leasing agents is in the room, and it's difficult to find commercial space in Leonardown. There is not a lot of it available.
And I think part of that is, it's a limited market. To get the scale of this, in terms of square footage, on a small basis, if it was a smaller site or something like that, possibly good, but to do it here for any significant space, you'd be looking at an office building with the required parking, forty, fifty thousand square feet. That's a lot to add within an individual market, in our opinion, at the same time.
Mr. Bailey, I have a question. So the boat and RV storage, is that gonna be visible from Route Five, or visible to any homeowners that live in Clark's Rest?
For.
Where it currently is now?
Let me answer the homeowner question first.
Okay.
Entrance to Clark's Rest is, flip this around a little bit, is back down here further, and I'll flip it around so that you can see it, and I'll come back to this drawing. So the commercial site's here. All the RV parking and so forth is all on this side of the building itself. So between, if you recall, is a lot of wooded area, looking from Clark's Rest down. That will screen as number one, and then number two from Clark's Rest. Residential side, the building itself is going to screen it at the same time, too. We thought about the question of screening here. We have a fence that goes around the property. We show landscaping. I'm not sure if it shows the specific type. What we would propose as a thought with that, in terms of being sensitive for visibility from Route Five here primarily, would be to add a row, and if you find it's appropriate, of Leyland cypress, or two rows of them staggered, so that they, they grow rapidly and so forth. That would screen it from Route Five, and we turn the corner and take it down this corner also at the same time, too. And we think that would be appropriate. We're willing to stipulate that would be part of the completion at the same time.
Yeah, really, the renderings that we've got here really doesn't share a lot of buffering, and I think that's one of the main concerns of the council.
In some, and I apologize for that. It's tough to show everything within a rendering to make reference. We're more willing to do that at the same time.
One question I've got, on the front of the building, the two-story, three-story building with the two stories of the glass, it looks like you can see the sliding doors from that. Could you buffer that some, so it would look more like an office building rather than a stories building? Or?
Would it be appropriate to leave the glass there, but use a tinting?
Right, exactly.
I think that's appropriate at the same time. Part of it, we need to figure out car layout and things of that, and we wanted to have the windows to make it attractive.
Sure, sure.
But we can certainly add tinting and so forth, so that would, so that you wouldn't see it.
Okay.
That's fine.
I'm definitely concerned with even if you put up, you know, foliage to block it for now, you know, what happens if it, it dies? What happens if the, you know, are you gonna be there to replace the trees every time they die? I don't want to see us here in five years, driving by a whole bunch of dead trees and motorhomes and boats sitting there right on the side of the road, big U-Haul trucks and stuff sitting right, right on the side of the road.
I would address that two ways. One, and I didn't elaborate, we plan to, we're gonna brand this as a national brand for a self-storage, like Cube Smart is who we're probably working with. We're gonna retain the ownership of this at the same time, too. In the properties that we have developed, we've maintained the ownership, and it, it varies in terms of jurisdiction. I would assume that your town has been part of your ordinance, that if it's approved with the site plan, that if it dies, there's a requirement to do any replacement or whatever at the same time, too. And we would be proactive to make, make sure that the landscaping is maintained properly and replaced if necessary at the same time.
We actually have an agreement, in some cases a planting agreement, that can be signed, saying that if something dies, that it can be replaced. So we can do that with this project, if that's something that you want.
Then that's very appropriate. We're more than willing to just add that.
So, I'm, I'm not gonna sugarcoat it. I'm not a big fan of this and this location, like, because it's so big, it's right on the road, it kind of seems box store-ish, you know what I mean? We're a small town. This seems kind of out of what, at least in my mind, I think of as a small-town use, given it is great, it is, you know, an approved use in this area. The only thing I, I did find in the ordinance that it seems like we could maybe change a little, the ordinance does require that parking, let's see if we can find it, outdoor storage areas, mechanical equipment, parking, and that be located behind the building or screened. Is there any way to move that RV parking and boat storage somehow behind that? Is there any way to move that RV parking and boat storage somehow behind that building so that when you're driving down the road, you're not seeing a fenced-in area with boats and RVs and?
Well, I think the, the landscaping is going to conceal, to start with. I think the concern would have been if we had to reposition the building to put that behind, then it would be even more mea-. I hear the objection of concern about Route 5. Then we try to keep the narrow dimension facing Route 5 rather than the other. If you turned it the other way, then that would defeat the purpose in terms of the scale that you would see along Route 5 at the same time. It's not, it's not getting you what you're looking for.
Sure, no, yeah, I understand. Is there any way to like L the building or something to kinda create maybe a little alcove where the parking could be so you kinda are blocked?
Maybe take this building and create a little L to it, possibly?
Or, yeah, or, you know, move some of that rear space to the front. I'm not probably explaining that very well, but.
And maybe, maybe the suggestion would be this, this building here, create an L to it. Uh, take, in other words, whatever that L would need to be there, take it off the back to allow them where it's there, and then keep, and we'd be willing to stipulate all of the parking would be on that side of it.
Yeah, I mean, anything to try to get some more of that parking and boat storage. Not that boats and RVs aren't pretty, but there's a reason why people don't want them in their yards. So I mean, you don't really wanna, you know what I mean?
Uh, and you, you make a valid point. One of the comments we have gotten from a number of people in the community, because there are covenants for Clark's Rest. The covenants say that you can't park trailers, RVs and so forth. Then you drive away, you find it parked on the roads. Then you point that out to the homeowners and say, well, where can I put it?
Right.
So that was one thing that they were attracted, that at least that something could be somewhat close to them that was attractive. But, and I'll offer this then. Take, suppose this is X number of feet. Take that X number of feet off the rear there and create an L at this location.
I think that would help and that would maybe even facade some of that garage bay-looking section of the.
And then we would have all that RV parking just on that backside of it.
I think, I think that would help.
And we'd be willing to do that. That's, that's reasonable. Sometimes it's hard to see all these things as a developer. You, you think you're making the right thing, but these are valid ones.
Yeah, and then the, the only other thing, I'm sorry, I almost jumped in front of you. So I was just following, going through the manual, um, and, um, referring to the development design manual. And my only other concern was kind of the, the front and the north, or I don't know what you call it, that side?
Yes.
Of the building. It's kind of a very flat, um, long, you know, there's nothing kind of, you know, making it look like it's maybe possibly other buildings connected or, so it's not just one flat thing, like doing some, um, banding of, I don't know what, architecturally what they're called, but, you know, things like that to kinda, maybe even some windows.
This too?
Yes, yeah, that one.
Go back and handle the ads.
Yeah, just to make it look less like a big.
That's right, and we're willing to work with staff for the solution if that's acceptable to use it.
Gotcha. Yeah, I think if you just go to section, let's see, there's a lot of good stuff in here. Section, is that ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen of the development design manual. Um, it talks about that kinda stuff. And that's really, and it talks about the parking and all that stuff.
Okay, so maybe you can come up with some more plannings for us and, and some design improvements and, um, present them to the council.
Would we come back or would we, would that be a staff, would we work with staff?
I mean, I'd kinda like to see it come back.
I was gonna say, I think the council would like, like you to come back next month if, if that's possible.
And if you could bring the landscaping plan and possible lighting, I mean, it doesn't have to be finalized, but like a rough idea of what the landscaping, maybe the lighting, 'cause I know lighting sometimes can travel.
Yeah, that could be a lot.
We would, uh, intend to use night-skies friendly so it's not shining up and so forth.
Perfect.
On the site plan, there's a proposed, um, it actually just says future expansion for, mm, about thirty-six thousand square feet. Is that, um, has this moved forward, um, if it is approved? Is that a proposed future expansion? Or we, we be approving that?
You're not approving it today.
We would come back to that. We, we thought it was appropriate to show if we have a demand, there could be the potential that we could increase the capacity. We thought it was appropriate to discuss it now rather than come back to the future time.
Can we note that that's proposed so that it's not assumed that it's, um, approved?
Okay, do we need a, uh, a motion to, uh?
Just, yeah, for the record, if you could just say delay the site plan until we come back with the revision.
Okay. Anyone care to make that motion?
I, I would make a motion to approve with amendments, but it sounds like the rest of the council would prefer to, to deny and have them, um, re-request.
It's not really a signing, it's delay.
Yeah, just delay, yeah.
Delay the decision.
I don't think that's really appropriate. Not to be difficult, I think, I mean, you're here asking for a, a decision. It's really.
Basically, we're gonna table it until next month then.
But that's not really a decision. So I, I would say either approve with amendments or deny expecting a, a re-request. But really, it, it would just be a motion, um, I mean, I would make a motion that we approve with the requested amendments. That's my motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
That's what I expected.
Do we have another motion then?
So I move to delay the final site plan action for Clark's Rest self-storage units located at two-five-eight-five-zero Point Lookout Road until the revised, till it's revised as requested.
No second?
Second, further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. Great. Thank you all very much and looking forward to next presentation. Okay.
All right, the next item is a presentation from the College of Southern Maryland to request community parks and playground grant partnership. The College of Southern Maryland is asking the town to apply for community parks and playground pass-through grant to allow them to build an out, outdoor, outdoor exercise equipment area for fifty-five thousand, five hundred and thirty-three dollars and pickleball courts for a hundred and eighty thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars, for a total of two hundred and thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four. And Kyle Keeball is here and Kim Yelman from, um, CSM, and Kyle is gonna do a presentation for you.
Welcome.
We're here at College of Southern Maryland to try to talk to you guys about a new opportunity, uh, to promote outdoor recreation in this wonderful community of Leonardtown that CSM is a part of. And, uh, you know, we have a great piece of space over there on our campus nearby, and we had a great vision as far as what to do with it. And we were aware of your pass-through partnership, um, with the playground recently at Vidinsky Park. And, uh, we certainly saw this as another opportunity to work with you guys and, uh, pursue, like, creating some more outdoor recreation space, not only to benefit CSM, but, uh, the town and everything that's around it. So outdoor exercise is also known as green exercise. It combines health-enhancing activities, which is moving your body and being outside. And what better place to do it than wonderful Leonardtown? So a diverse rec, outdoor recreation system contributes to community capital by providing a high quality of life for those who utilize it. While with increasing urbanization, communities are continuously seeking new ways to provide outdoor spaces and activities to residents, and outdoor exercise is one ideal option. Outdoor fitness parks allow users to exercise while enjoying natural and designed landscapes in an open-air environment. Outdoor fitness parks serve a diverse range of users while also contributing to an overall community health. Uh, phase one, CSM has already completed. As you may or may not be aware, in the summer of twenty eighteen, we officially opened our Fitness and Nature Trail. It's a little under a half a mile. Uh, it starts and ends on CSM property and it runs through the forest area on campus, crossing a creek that was created by runoff from the town-run stream, goes up and down some hilly areas, and, you know, promotes nature and biology, and is open to all. Here's some pictures. And I have to say, uh, CSM couldn't have done it without some help from our community partners, which included Dominion Energy, the Natural Resource Management Program, environmental planning and conservation at PAX, Tuxton Tide Waterland Trust, the Maryland Department of Natural Resources, Co-Point Natural Heritage Trust Board of Trustees, and our own CSM Biology Department. So with the help of Google Maps, I said, what's, what's within walking distance of CSM? So all these and a lot more are within one mile of walking, uh, to our campus. And we thought, what a better spot to have some outdoor recreation opportunities when we are in the center of all these big businesses and neighborhoods with plenty of other small businesses as well. So this is where we came into phase two of our program. Um, you'll see there in our parking lot on campus, and the view from up above the parking lot is down there on a flat green space. Um, right to the left of that green space is the entrance to our CSM Nature and Fitness Trail. So, um, as Michelle mentioned, our first, um, idea is a fifty-five thousand dollar outdoor fitness equipment stations. It is five different stations, um, featuring over a hundred and twenty different exercises. Uh, this is actually the same concept that the Leonard's Grant Homeowners Association uses and, um, the same contractor we have worked with, which is Playground Specialists, which also worked on the project over at Vidinsky Park. So I, like I mentioned, it's five different stations, a hundred and twenty different exercises. Uh, we are in favor of the hundred percent recycled rubber mulch, both for the longevity of the project, um, as well as the cosmetic appeal. Um, this fifty-five thousand dollars includes all site preparation, installation, and seed and straw for any of the disturbed areas during the construction process. Um, a little bit more about the, uh, Energy Prime System, which we are, um, recommending to install. It's for ages thirteen and up. It has, um, exercises for over six hundred muscles. Each station has twenty-four different exercises featured on it. Um, they also allow for three different exercise skill levels to use their stations over inner, middle, intermediate, and advanced. Um, it also has a disclaimer, suggested use on each side, as well as instructions on how to do each exercise. And these are all body weight. Only, um, you know, this minimizes the need for any additional equipment, uh, that, that would need to be provided by the user or CSM. So use, uh, types of programming for outdoor fitness, fitness equipment. Um, CSM has community memberships that are our group X passport and individual memberships, so those members would be eligible to use that. CSM could offer, also offer, um, continuing education classes as well as credit classes on the outdoor equipment. We, CSM has the time-off fitness program, which allows two hours per week for faculty and staff in use of that equipment to follow lines with those guidelines. And also the equipment would be accessible for the community, um, the surrounding community for free. We're open seven days a week. And it's, like I mentioned, it's within one mile of walking distance for many of those businesses and homes, but, uh, we have plenty of parking for anybody that would wanna come use this. And like, this would be the first of its kind in St. Mary's County open to the public that I'm aware of. And like I mentioned, Leonard's Grant HOA has it for their, um, community members. The second part of the project, which would be also in that green space, would be pickleball. Um, I, I think many people have probably heard of it, but it's one of the fastest-growing sports in the United States right now, especially with the baby boomer generation. It's a combination of tennis and racquetball. Um, it's, it's low stress on the joints, so it's favored by many of the population, um, who have maybe had a previous sports injury or doesn't want to risk a future injury. Um, and it's, you know, it's very, very popular for, you know, these particular demographics. It's not meant just for senior citizens. It's, um, a sport capable for all age groups. Uh, it's, it's very cheap to play. All you really need is a racket and a ball. Types of programming available for pickleball, um, same with the outdoor equipment. The classes would be available for our community members, uh, at the CSM Fitness Center. We could offer continuing education classes as well as credit classes. Uh, practice, uh, use of the court would also be eligible for some time-off fitness program for CSM staff and faculty. And, uh, use of the courts would be accessible for the community. Uh, that would include organized leagues, tournaments, one-day events, um, you know, clinics, you know, anything along those lines. You know, our campus is open seven days a week. To my knowledge, there are no pickleball courts, uh, in the immediate Leonardtown area. I think there are some down at Chancellor's Run Park and some, I believe, at Laurel Grove Park in Mechanicsville. And so, you know, having a pickleball court accessible in this community, um, and available to all, I think is, is a great, you know, location for it. Here's a little bit of a picture, um, what pickleball looks like. It's a smaller version of a tennis court. Uh, the design we're favoring is, would be your left-hand picture, uh, which would be three courts side by side with, um, fences separating them, fences in between each court, controls where the balls go, uh, for those who, who aren't experts at keeping it in bounds all the time. And the, the entire three-court system would be, um, have a ten-foot fence around it with a privacy screen as well. And that would also prevent balls from going into the woods, um, as well. So this would be a hundred and eighty thousand dollar project. It would include three regulation pickleball courts with painted lines and net posts. Included the chain-link fence with gate and privacy fabric, and that would include all site preparation and installation. So what are the benefits of an outdoor park? It's eco-friendly, low maintenance, uses very little human resources, minimal impact on the natural environment, and it's attractive to the developer, the funder, and the end-user. It makes exercise fun. It creates, or it allows for exercise outdoors in the natural light and, uh, raises your sensory stimulation. It's available for everybody, uh, no matter whether you're low-income, medium-income, or high-income. You can use this, uh, like I mentioned, with pretty much minimal costs. And even CSM Fitness Center would have, uh, you know, the equipment, the racket and the balls, you know, available to check out or rent, you know, should you not choose to purchase it on your own. Obviously, any, you know, not only pickleball and fitness exercise, but any kind of recreation promotes friendship and socialization. It's no secret that exercise improves your health, especially when you have the benefit of vitamin D. And it smarts, uh, supports community capital and attracts new users. I mean, this is, this is a, a new trend and it, like, I think it's pretty new to the area. And I, I think it could, you know, increase tourism specifically for the town of Leonardtown, especially if we get to the point where we're hosting tournaments, having leagues, having camps, you know, anything along those lines and, and, you know, being a trendsetter and bringing this popular sport that is, is taking off across the, you know, taking across, taking off across the nation, uh, bringing it to Southern America. And as Michelle mentions, you know, we would be looking for a hundred percent funding through the community parks and pla, uh, community parks and playground program. This deadline is Aug, deadline to apply is August twenty nineteen, and the. And the funds are distributed in May of twenty twenty. And it would be a pass through grant, which, um, the town would pass through the funds to CSM and we would take on the project. Uh, to date, the capital, our Community Parks and Play- Playground Program has donated over seventy million dollars and done, um, at least seven hundred and twenty-three different projects, which have included already pickleball courts and outdoor fitness equipment in the state of Maryland. So, we're, we're looking, uh, for CSM, Town Leonard Town, work together, promote outdoor recreation and continue to provide the residents with, you know, plenty of gorgeous views, sunshine, and, and a chance to improve their health and wellness. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I will say, uh, you know, pickleball is becoming a big thing. I didn't realize how big it was. I've, I've got a client that, uh, she travels all over the United States for tournaments. And, uh, now she was complaining that there's no place down here that's covered, 'cause you, you, for tournaments like that, you, you need it covered. So, I guess that, in the future, this could be covered if it does become.
Yeah, I mean, I know that, you know, St. Mary's Recreation Parks, um, they have some pickleball over at Leonard Hall Recreation Center. And I know that, uh, the new Department of Aging, I think they're, they may have some outdoor pickleball or tennis courts they're developing for their users. Um, of course, that's for their senior population, this particular project would be open to all.
And actually, I was at your, uh, grant opening last year and, uh, it's a very nice facility. How much use is that getting? Do you know?
We don't have a, a way to, um, track it.
Monitor that, 'cause it's, yeah, you just go and walk through there.
But I think, you know, expanding that, that outdoor space as a whole, um, would bring awareness, not only to the trail, but just increasing more foot traffic there. And, you know, CSM also has a plan, uh, in the next five years to connect, um, Leonard Hall Drive to CSM's campus as well, which will open up traffic driving, um, driving, you know, it's, it's a pass through, you know, you can connect from Route Five directly to County Government Campus and vice versa. And you'd pretty much be driving, um, right past the surface trail.
Right, right. Comments, questions?
Could anybody use these facilities? I, or do you need to have, be taking a class at CSM? I mean, could, like, I own a weekend, say, if we're being used, I wanna come over and just use it.
You know, as long as you have your own pickleball, uh, pickleball and paddle, or, but the, the fitness stations, you can completely go work out on your own. Uh, CSM would offer their own, you know, organized classes for credit and continuing education, but, you know, as a community member or, or just a St. Mary's County resident in general, you can go, uh, attend that. You know, of course, we would certainly hope that people would like what CSM has there and can come into our Fitness and Aquatic Center and then see what we're all about. But, you know, having that amenity in, in the town of Leonard Town, um, as well, and, and our job promoting health and wellness in the community, and, you know, I think it would be great for, for both parties.
Will there be any lights on the pickleball courts?
Uh, it's not in the initial plan, um, but I think the, the, the nice benefit of a project like this is it can always be added. I don't think we can fit any more than three courts in that space, but, um, I think lights can probably be added. And then, so, we'd have three courts and these fitness stations would be kind of encircle the, uh, the courts.
Are you impacting the parking area?
No.
Okay, all right, it was in red and I wasn't sure.
Oh, yeah.
I think you said certain places now do pickleball in St. Mary's County, is that right?
A lot of, a lot of, a lot of the movement is to, um, redo existing tennis courts. Um, so they, uh, they either paint a different set of lines onto a current tennis court. Um, I'm not sure, I think Chancellor's Run may have developed.
Seventh District Baggett Park and Chancellor's Run have all been modified.
Modified, yeah, that, that hasn't been, that hasn't been any new construction.
Uh, no, just the Leonard Hall indoor and then the new ones that are coming to the senior center, there's gonna be four courts with the senior center.
Okay. Is there any way, uh, along with that, to, um, to mark the courts for maybe multiple use, since you're building them anyway? Would there be a way to mark them for tennis, pickleball, and, uh, even maybe have a couple basketball nets there?
I don't think, or, if you were more core smaller than tennis courts, you wouldn't be able to fit a tennis court in that space. Um, and, you know, certainly, we were exploring, I don't know, on other parts of our campus, like, you know, single use pickleball and basketball court. Uh, I think we could certainly, you know, look, explore that option as well. And I think you could really continue to, you know, develop that space if you ever wanted to. You could add, you know, pavilion or, um, you know, picnic tables and such, or dog stations, you know, anything along those lines.
Yeah, I, I think if there's any way that they could be multiple use so that when they weren't, I mean, I assume that CSM is going to manage the facility and the maintenance of it for, in perpetuity?
Perfect.
Okay. Um. I, I think it would be really beneficial since, um, the impervious surface is already going down, the, the, the fencing's going up. And, I mean, the parking is really already there, that, um, for, for Leonard Town residents, um, when, when CSM isn't using the courts for, um, I guess their scheduled classes or, or training, um, that there could be, um, other uses there, um, of the courts. I, is there any way that, um, that that's, um, doable?
Yeah, I think we could, you know, work with the, uh, the architect and we'd have to get approval from our leadership and, um, you know, see if, I think it's just a matter of painting different lines on there. And of course, you know, with each sport, you're gonna be tracking different demographics and then users and, you know, be able to get them all to play nice with each other is certainly, you know, something to hope happens, but, you know, I think.
And I think the decision was made in some of the newer neighborhoods not to do basketball courts, because in some of the other neighborhoods, that has been the issue. The neighbors say it's too noisy, that tends to be when there's a problem, um, so I'm not sure.
Yeah, I remember that coming up in discussions before, so this seems like a good opportunity to have some basketball courts since there's no residence adjacent to the property.
Yeah, I mean, and, um.
You would maximize the use of the, of the funds.
I think that there's other basketball courts around town.
There, there are basketball courts over there at CSM right now, but, well, there's, there's asphalt and the holes.
Yeah.
I wonder if we could just have those refurbished.
I think right now it's been potentially earmarked to have future buildings or parking in that area. Uh, it's what our leadership has told us, um, because we first targeted that area, 'cause it was already flat. Um, so we, we transitioned over to the, the green space.
So today we're just looking for consent for them to move forward with the, uh.
Application.
Application for the grant.
The other concern I had was, um, walking connectivity, 'cause I think right now there are no sidewalks that directly connect to the college. There's the sidewalk north of, uh, Point Lookout Road or north of Route Five that runs along the college campus. But there's no actual direct walking connectivity except through the, um, uh, I guess through the grass, um, there's.
There are sidewalks in front of our, our B, C, and D buildings, um, on the campus.
Correct, but those are only accessible, um, uh, via vehicle, so you can't, like, if I walk out of the front door here and try to walk to the campus, you, you have to walk through the grass. And there, there's those two beautiful, um, alleyways of trees.
You'd have to connect to Hollywood Leonard Town Road and then come on the campus, there's, there's currently not anything on Route Five.
I wonder, um, and I think that building's under historic, uh, or Building One or Building A is under historic overlay, correct?
Uh, I'm not sure.
The, the old building, the old St. Mary's.
Yeah, the original building.
The old academy.
I, I wonder if there's any way that, um, I, I guess it's just a matter of use, um, maybe they could be marked or some sort of gravel put down, um, to connect the, the, um, the sidewalks in town to the actual campus, 'cause right now there, there isn't really any connectivity for the downtown or the neighborhoods unless they drive there.
I had met with, um, Dr. Harris at one point, are you talking about from Hollywood Road back to the back of the campus?
Well, even, even just onto the campus. Right now, if you walk down the sidewalk, um, obviously the grass is, you know, next to the, to the sidewalk. But there's those two beautiful alleyways that, um, I guess, uh, have always, the alleyways of trees.
Yeah, and they're old roads.
There were old roads there that, that are just grassed in. And so it may just be a matter of people starting to use those to access the campus via foot. And then it would be obvious that those are walkways, but, um, in keeping with, I guess, the, the history of that site, um, some sort of gravel walkway or, um, or even a sidewalk to connect the campus to, um, to the existing sidewalks that we added on, in perpetuity, um, two thirty five, two forty five.
I, I know what Dr. Harris's idea was, the, the driveway that goes along, um, perpendicular to Hollywood Road, like, uh, along Mayor Norris's house. And, um, he, but they, we looked into it and they, they don't own enough property to do it, so it would have to be on another property. But that's where they were hoping to do some sidewalk into that area at one point. But you're talking more on the ne- closer to Route Five.
Great one.
Yeah, I think the, the alleyways of trees are there and, and it's easy enough to just walk from the sidewalk to the campus, but they're, they're not marked and nobody really does that. So, I, I'm, I don't wanna belabor the point or ask for, um, too much more money or anything to be spent on that. But I do think, um, in practice, because it's so close to downtown, and really kind of a part of downtown, um, e- either some sort of marking or, or gravel or, or sidewalk to connect the campus to the wa- the sidewalk along the highway there.
Maybe that's something you take back to your leadership and see if the, that could be added.
Just, just connectivity is, is what we're looking, looking for, so.
So, some behind our digital sign, you know, when you cross the crosswalk on Five from downtown, something besides walking, you know, all the way down to our en- entrance on campus.
Right, right.
Yeah, the, I mean, the, the alleyways are there and so it might just be a matter of people starting to use those to, to access the campus, but, um.
Yeah.
Yep. So do we have consensus to, uh, allow them to move forward?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I would ask, um, I'm sorry to, I don't mean to pitch it to the ring here, um, with, uh, some of the previous pass, pass through grants we've done, um, I would ask, um, at least through, um, construction, um, that the town be included, um, in, in managing the, um, uh, the construction, uh, planning and draws of the, of the facility. I mean, much like we did with.
Right, it would have to go through plating and zoning, pretty much.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did she have a question?
She did have a question.
Can she ask a question?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
So the park is only for thirteen years olds and up, or can little kids, it's under thirteen?
Well, generally, um, they, they advise based off the size of the equipment, that you should be at least thirteen years old, um, just so that you can use it safely without hurting yourself. But you can go at any age right now and use the park. And also, if we built pickleball courts, you can use that at any age as well.
So maybe while adults are utilizing the fitness equipment, you know, a kid could be, you know, playing pickleball or maybe.
Yeah, there's plenty of, there's plenty of grass space that's undeveloped there, um, you know, or any other imaginary kids' games that we all know they like to play.
Um, is pets allowed?
Are pets allowed on your campus?
No, they're not.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thanks for your question.
Yeah, that's great, great job.
Okay, uh, next item is to award the Leonard Town Floating Dock bid. Um, the floating dock project was publicly bid. The RFP was sent out to approximately a hundred and fifty Maryland licensed contractors. We received two bids, which were opened on May seventh. Both were over the budget amount that was remaining with our grant and what we had previously funded. Um, the, a balance left on that was three hundred and twenty-one thousand, four hundred and forty-nine. The, um, we had bid the project in two phases, and I actually have the drawing so that, to point that out. So, this is phase one, and then we had an alternate as phase two, is this little piece here. And, public, so this is Leonard Town Warf, and this is phase one, and this piece is, uh, is bid as an alternate. S.E. Davis, uh, was the low bidder at three hundred and forty-nine thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven for phase one, and eighty-two thousand, six hundred and fifty-four dollars for phase two. So significantly over budget. We are also, um, required to provide a pump out station, uh, if we have built anything over ten slips. We do have a fifteen thousand dollar grant that we received for that, but we would still need twenty-seven thousand to complete that project, um, because we have to run a significant run of, um, electric down to the location. What staff is recommending is to build phase one at this time, um, based on the bids that we received. And we would delay phase two, we would have to rebid it at a later date. And also, we would not be required to build the pump station in phase one because it would be less than ten slips. Um, then we would apply for additional funding for the pump station in phase two as DNR is, um, changing their grant guidelines, and we would be eligible for additional funds. I've already talked with them and that's what they would recommend as well. We also could, uh, apply for additional funds for the pump out station, 'cause they're changing those grant guidelines as well. Um, the additional amount that's needed of town funds for phase one would be approximately forty-eight thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars. That figure includes an estimate for inspection and engineering through, um, through the construction phase. Um, I estimate it about twenty thousand dollars. Hopefully, that would come in less. What we are recommending as far as the engineering and inspection is to use GHD, who, um, won the original bid for design, to continue overseeing the technical questions that would come up and the submittals. And as they're located in Bowie, they wouldn't be traveling down here, that could all be done electronically. And then using our local inspector, um, that we have on staff and a, um, a former local marine contractor, Tim Beckwith, who no longer owns his business but is very familiar with it, uh, to supplement the inspection, because our, our inspector is not really familiar with, um, marine construction. Is that clear? And then the second part is actually, uh, gonna be, uh, a, um, separate item, uh, for the, an amendment to the original floating dock design with GHD. But I can go through that in just a minute, or if you want me to do them all together.
Any questions on the dock?
Um, I, I had a question. We had the fifteen thousand dollar grant for the pump out station, so do we have to give that back now?
Um, what, when I talked to them last week, um, they, we would give it up for this year, but we could apply for a larger one. Fifteen was the maximum last year, um, but there won't be a problem. Those are on a rolling side going, you don't have to do it, uh, on a certain timeframe.
Okay.
And pretty much anybody that applies for those gets those. And then, previously, they had a hundred thousand dollar cap on the waterway improvement grants, and we got two separate ones of those. They're raising that to two hundred and fifty thousand, so we can submit a larger application and certainly we could cover phase two, uh, under those guidelines.
So we're giving up fifteen thousand to get twenty theoretically?
Um, well, I, I don't know what the, the maximum is gonna be on the, the, um, pump out grant.
Mm-hmm.
But we, there's twenty-seven thousand that isn't covered at this point in the pump out alone, um, as a separate project.
And then this, the forty-eight thousand comes, I know you told us once, I'm just making sure I understand, comes out of the fund balance.
Correct.
And that won't, does that bring us below, what's our?
We were already below fifty, did you do? In the budget document you get today.
So how much?
They will have a very detailed explanation.
Okay.
But that forty-eight thousand only needs to partially be funded with fund balance. The budget draft yielded some surplus on the revenue side, so that revenue surplus would be a current operating revenue. So we don't need the whole forty-eight thousand dollars from the fund balance. But the, the new, um, reserve balances are detailed in that document.
Okay.
And we weren't at fifty last year.
Gotcha. Or we, would be, we, would we be worse than they?
Um, there's two options, thirty or forty-one percent. So if you read through that, you'll, as part of the workshop next week, we'll have a lot of discussion about, you know, where, the choices that we're making and where that. the choices that we're making and where that puts us as far as reserves. And, um, ultimately, those decisions will have to be made before the recommended budget is finalized and we move forward with whatever show we should make.
One of, one of the hundred thousand dollar grants is three years old at this point, and we have to make a decision on that or we'll be giving back those grant monies as well.
Any other comments?
I think what you'll find is recommending to move forward with phase one is affordable within the confines of this, what you're talking.
That's what I wanna hear, that's what I'm saying, that sounds better.
I move to award the floating dock bid to S.E. Davis Construction LLC in the amount of three hundred and forty-nine thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars, uh, for phase one and to continue with GHD for the needed engineering, uh, and Tim Beckwith for local inspection.
As a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second, any further comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
Okay, and the other part of that is, um, within those numbers that I just quoted, um, we had originally bid the engineering portion back in February of twenty seventeen. Uh, and the bids, we received four bids ra- ranging from twenty-four thousand, eight sixty, which was GHD's bid, up to forty-two thousand, five hundred. And that was based on a shorter span and a, and an original, uh, scope of work. GHD was the low bidder. The per- permit process, um, was handled as much as possible by staff, but there were numerous change, changes that came in, uh, to the engineering drawings and to satisfy MDE and Army Corps and surrounding property owners. Uh, we did take over a year to, uh, receive the Army Corps permit and, uh, almost a year for the MDE permit, and it was back and forth and lots of changes over the time. So, the engineering ran over by five thousand, five hundred and fifty-one dollars from what we originally budgeted. And, um, I did take that into consideration in the numbers that I, that I already gave you. Um, and, um, the construction engineering would be a, a separate line item as part of the larger construction project, which we just talked about. Um, but I'm requesting an additional five thousand, five hundred and fifty-one from the project bus, budget to fund the cost overruns for the engineering to date.
All right, I move to amend GHD task order number seventeen for Wharf floating dock engineering by five thousand, five hundred and fifty-one dollars for a total of thirty thousand, four hundred and eleven dollars due to the extended permit process coordination.
I'll second.
Who's second?
I'll second.
Yep, Mary, okay.
I got it.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you.
Thank you. When are they looking to start construction?
Um, well, I'll work with the engineer, we'll issue the notice to proceed and see how soon S.E. Davis can, um, coordinate getting started. The largest portion of that, that, um, bid is, um, the, um, the equipment itself.
Gotcha.
So, they have to order that, and I'm not sure how long that's gonna take. Um, the last item is the, uh, contract for sale of our condo number three oh one at four one six six oh Courthouse Drive. On April thirtieth, we went to settlement on condo number three hundred yielding approximately a hundred and eighty-two thousand, one hundred and fifty-two, twenty-three, after a sales price of a hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars. It is anticipated that we would yield approximately a hundred and eighty-one thousand on this contract if accepted, and we would then also, if we accept this, um, contract, we would need to finalize it with an ordinance, uh, next month, just like we did with the other condo. So, the sales price, um, on this one is one nine, one ninety-five five.
Comments?
And this one was a little smaller than the other one, right?
Correct.
Correct.
And it doesn't have the water view.
Gotcha.
Okay, so this is the one where, I guess Terry said, goes on, okay.
She probably did a lot of damage, that's why it's not working. So Rebecca was over there too.
And we do have a realtor's here, if anyone has any questions.
Um, what's this, the, our contract sales price?
One ninety-five five.
And the oth- the other side was one ninety-seven and we netted, um, one eighty-two one on the other one, and this one would be around one eighty-one.
So, they're both very close.
Very close.
Yeah.
And if you remember, we're paying utilities, we're paying the condo fees, um, just a lot of work.
All right, well, I move to authorize Mayor Burris to sign the contract for sale of condo unit three oh one at four one six six zero Courthouse Drive in an amount of one hundred and ninety-five thousand, five hundred to Alonso Real Estate Investment Group LLC.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
Mayor Burris, I'm going to abstain from this vote.
Sure. Okay, uh, anything else? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No questions. Tyler has an appointment, he needs to, uh, take care of the kids before getting there.
My husband's picking mine up.
They have to stay overnight. So, your events report is in the packet if he doesn't have to go over it.
Brandy, anything you wanna add to it, Vincent's?
Uh, yeah, it's a pretty complete, uh, report. The only thing, um, I will add is that, um, the restaurants that are, um, participating in the picnic bag program, that's gonna start, uh, with this concert on the eighteenth, uh, and that includes the, um, Social Coffee House, Jesse's Kitchen, Smokey Joe's on the town, uh, Sugar's Old Bean Market, and Port Leonard Town Market. And the, um, Big Larry's is doing the catering for the concerts as well, for the, um, camp.
For the main, right.
How, how do you go about getting one of those picnic bag lunches, who do you contact?
Well, you go to the website, www.lenardtownmusicfest.com.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there's a section that talks about the picnic bag program and, uh, provides, lets you know what cons- what restaurants are particu- participating for each concert.
And what their menu is.
And then, uh, it has the contact information for them.
Do you order directly from?
They're all for it as well.
Do you do that all online, or do you have to call them?
You have to call them, or even in some instances, go to their website and order.
Okay. Good, I think that sounds good. Yeah, it's a great idea.
Yeah.
Okay, so, since Tyler left, we jumped to him, but as far as my report goes, just wanna let you all know that hotel did sell last week and, uh, they settled and, uh, hopefully, they'll start to move on renovations of the, uh, the rooms themselves. They had an architect in there looking at the possibility of doing a larger kitchen, so they're coming, coming up with those plans. So, see if that will work for a commercial kitchen. Uh, the Slice House, as you know, is doing very well. They've, uh, they've actually added a number of items this, this week, so they're, they're coming right along. They're happy as can be. And, uh, the Hamptons, I stopped down there today, they've actually have twenty-one of the units leased, so not all have moved in yet, but they're, they're up to twenty-one.
See?
Yep, moving forward, so. Okay, um, moving back to Christie, utilities?
Um, I don't have anything on utilities. I did go to the, I've been to a bunch of the things, but the, the car show was really well attended, it was nice. We only got a nice day, so.
Yep, it was. Uh, Jay, so the Mail and News School?
All right, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I have to, uh, read off my little tiny piece of paper here since I ripped my sheet in half, so, uh, let's see, the summer conference is coming up, that's next month. We just had our last board meeting, um, so also, I will, will be returning to the ML, MML board as district vice president for another year, so our first board meeting will be at the summer conference. And our next SMMA meeting is September eleventh, twenty nineteen, and that's in Chesapeake Beach, so.
Okay.
And, uh, of course, Indian Head just had, as we all know, just had their election, so, um, pretty much, they stayed the same. Mayor Pollan's back in and Ron's the vice president and Curtis Smith is a council member.
Email about him being the chapter.
Yes, Brandon will be the chapter, Indian Head takes over, so he'll be the chapter president.
Okay, okay.
And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Um, Aiden, community development planning?
I don't have a report.
Okay, I did notice that, um, I think, um, Clark's Rest, they've got, I mean, they're, they're on schedule to sell fifty homes this year, so.
Oh.
Wow.
Yep, yep. Yep. Okay, Mary, business development and retention?
Yes, um, LaShaw, Christie and I attended the Chamber of Commerce, um, business showcase on Wednesday and worked the table. LaShaw had set up these beautiful banners in the back, and, um, it was great. I thought it, I thought it was great. We met a lot of people, had a lot of good feedback for going. Um, my kids had a great time, as always, going around and getting to see all the businesses, and my son said, this is, I like that sticker place, Mom. I said, the sticker place? He goes, yeah, where you put all the stickers on the paper? Yes, that was, that was fun. And my daughter won, won a basket, as she always does. No alcohol this year, that's, that's not good. Um, and I also met with some of the businesses on Fenwick Street, and they are working, trying to put together a block party. So, that would be in June, I think that they're working on, and, and that sounds like that would be a really great thing. The businesses are really excited, and they've got some really good ideas to bring in, um, you know, the hot dog cart and kinda make it a really, really fun event, so I hope that works out for them, and that's all I have.
Great, thank you. Anybody, anyone else have anything?
Thanks.
Sure.
Very important, I'm actually glad I came to this, uh, this development. Um, I'm Charles Reed. I'm here, I'm in reference to my last visit, uh, back in September. Um, you know, I have the, it's a bit of a different representation of what I was discussing at the time, but, um, specifically then, I was talking about, um, the ordinance one eighty-two, uh, that was enacted to essentially provide, uh, I guess, a means through which for one to get a permit, uh, to be able to consume alcohol at the Wharf. Uh, my primary concern was that there wasn't very much public input into that, and, uh, most of the ordinance served a very important purpose, was to update very equitable, you know, I mean, there's stuff in there that you couldn't sell alcohol on Sunday, so I get all that, but, uh, specifically how it pertains to just individuals in public. You know, you guys mentioned that you were gonna take it under consideration and review it and get back to me. Um, you know, admittedly, I haven't been able to be here since September, but, um, yeah, I was wondering if anything had been, uh, moved or discussed in that era, and, um, my other concern, you know, the, the floating dock and so on and so forth. I'm wondering, is this, it was mentioned last time that there was an intention to have a restaurant developed down there. Um, I personally think it's a horrible idea to develop, get another critical area with, get another restaurant when, quite frankly, there's an empty bank down the street, or numerous other sites that we could put numerous other, um, you know, restaurants in the town. Not to mention that has a, an environmental impact, a restaurant is probably the single worst they need to put there because, I mean, you can't even ban straws here, you know, there's an idea. Um, but, uh, yeah, getting back, I don't wanna get too far off topic. Uh, again, I, I'm just very dissatisfied with the way that that ordinance itself was implemented, and specifically how it pertains, um, to just ordinary people consuming their own alcohol and crabs. Um, there were no instances that could be cited by the, you know, police or anything else of, uh, problems at the Wharf as a result of being able to consume alcohol. Um, you know, I'm not, I don't wanna be the public face of being able, you know, smoking drink near the Wharf, but you can't even smoke, and now you can't even drink. And I don't feel like that was, uh, really, um, a public discussion. So, I was wondering if, you know, like I said, eh, all we gotta do is delete a line, maybe two, of that ordinance that pertain to this. And the other motivation here is that it provides absolutely no avenue for an individual to be able to get a permit. It's very vague, and it only applies to, quote, events or organizations, I think is what it, uh, specifically referenced. Um, I don't have the ordinance with me in front of me, but everybody hears, so, you know, it's been about six months, I'm just wondering what you guys think.
Well, I would just say that, um, I, I think our, our ordinance is very liberal in that, that, compared to the counties. The county cannot have any alcohol on, on any public space, right?
Any park, yeah, well, any park.
Right, any, any, any parks. We do allow it for ev- you know, events, like you said, so, yeah, I think we're, we're actually.
But neither of that, and unfortunately, it was perfectly fine the way it was, and then overnight. In fact, I didn't even know until I was, what, months after it had been enacted. Um, and it was an incident that involved me, that literally, uh, I think was the catalyst. And not to mention, it was started by the Alcohol Board and the Sheriff's Office, is my understanding. Neither of which are, you know, elected groups or really responsible to any of the people who utilize that park. And again, there were no instances or complaints or, we have enough laws already. I mean, you can't be drunk in public, you can't get a DUI, leave it out of the Wharf. There's no reason why an individual, I don't see the, the purpose, I guess, what I'm asking. If somebody has one, I'd love to hear it, because it didn't seem like you guys were making an income off of, you know, individual purchasing a permit. There isn't a price set for it. I have no way to reply, I just, I don't know why we did this, that's, that's all.
Uh, I don't think the ordinance, um, was intended to be specific, uh, in terms of, uh, of limiting consumption of alcoholic beverages by individuals at just the Wharf. I think we're trying to keep, um, all of the town park space, whether it be the square, or, or the, uh, the park by the winery, or the, uh, and where the kayak launch is, or the Wharf. Um, all of those are spaces that people are allowed to use for events. And so, I think the question of can someone drink a beer down at the Wharf or, or on the square, or, or at the, uh, the kayak launch?
You can't consume alcohol in the square because there's restaurants, period, I mean, you couldn't be standing out in front of a.
Well, but that, that's something that's come up several times with some of the businesses in town and several events that have happened in town. So, I think the discussion is, is a larger discussion than whether, um, an individual can consume a beer on public property because it really, um, starts to open the door to, um, what our public consumption laws are. And there are a couple other towns in the state that have broached that, and for, um, for events, they've been able to allow, um, public consumption of alcohol on public, um, spaces. But I don't believe that any of them allow that on an individual basis without there being, um, an event scheduled. I could be wrong. Berlin is the one that comes to mind.
Right, for events, they, people can walk around town, and the only one we're allowed is Taste of Saint Mary's has been able to, to do that, but it's in, you still have the confines, you know, they have to, um, have someone monitoring the all exits. So, we, we got a lot of pressure from, um, the alcohol beverages board and from the police uh, on how our ordinance was written and allowing people to drink, um, on, on the public property. Um, we did not want to give up our right to have, for instance, the concerts, if we wanna have a limited area where people can have a bottle of wine, um, or events at the Wharf for the winery. Um, so, we came up with the language, um, for the ordinance, and we did go through the proper public process. It was advertised, uh, it was a multiple month process. Um, so, I, I'm sorry, um, if Charles didn't receive notice, but it was very publicly done, um, just like we're required to do. Um, and, you know, we did have a lot of pressure from both of those entities to, to redo our ordinance and to make it more, um, so that you have to have a permit, just someone can't just walk down the street with a, with an open container. Um, and, um, we were in jeopardy of losing all of our benefits, um, if, if we did not come up with a, a strategy.
So, what's the definition of an event? Sorry, I'm not real, super familiar with the ordinance.
Um, it's, it's pretty, I mean, it could be a birthday party, it could be, uh, and we, we get it all the time, and, and since we've instituted the ordinance, we don't have any issue. Um, I have to sign off on any of the permits. Um, Brandy handles the event permits, and it, and it asks a specific question, are you going to serve alcohol? Are you gonna sell alcohol? Cause there's different rules that apply, and we have to know that it's being handled properly and that, and sometimes people have to go get a one-day license, in some cases, if they're not selling it, they don't have to. Um, so, we have a permit process, and if, you know, an individual was gonna have a little picnic down there and have a group of people and wanted to serve alcohol, they could certainly come. a group of people and wanted to serve alcohol, they could certainly come in and get a permit. It, it doesn't limit it to that. Uh, we have not, um, had any problems. Um, and I think if Christie was here, she would tell you the same thing, that the police have not had any issues since then. Um, so, I mean, it seems to be working.
How, how long is, how long does it take for a permit?
Oh, you can get it the same day.
So you could come in and, like, if he wanted to have crabs or something and beer down at the Wharf, on Friday night, he could come in at Friday and get you to sign a permit and go, go sit down there?
Yeah.
So can we all agree that prior to June though, as a result of no previous instance, an individual could be at the Wharf, consuming alcohol, abiding by all the same laws that we already have on the books, and that we've changed this ordinance strictly under pressure from, I don't know if that would be the Sheriff's Office or the Alcohol Board, neither of which are elected officials, you know. Uh, I guess what I'm saying is, what did the town seek or potentially lose, or was going to lose?
There were, there were instances, and technically, we, you weren't allowed per our old ordinance, which was very, very outdated. You weren't necessarily allowed to be down there having alcohol. We were allowing it.
But you weren't not allowed. So, and I'm not trying to split words.
Well, and there were issues.
There's literally no law to suggest that a person couldn't.
Well, I don't think the property was public property back then. It was, it was private property, and so when the.
No, it was concerning public property. We were allowing it, um, and the police did have issues. There was a lot of conflicting information. The police then went to the liquor board because we didn't, they looked at our ordinances that were actually on the books, and that's when we changed them. So.
Oh, I guess that's what made, that's what I'm getting at.
But there were other instances of question, questioning it, and we always allowed it, um, but technically, our ordinance did not allow it. So we were not following our own ordinance. So they wanted, um, us to make a decision, uh, and move forward actual legislation so that everyone knew what the rules are and, um, they could enforce them.
So, uh, just to clarify, and again, you know, I'm not, I'm not splitting hairs on people drinking beers down the middle of the square. That's not what I'm looking for here. Um, I do think that there isn't a reason to make a law in the absence of one to dictate something that need not be legislated because there's several already codified laws to disturb how one can be intoxicated in public or the manner with which they do it or drive. So I don't feel like it was necessary at all. But beyond that, or you're telling me that I could walk into the town hall downstairs and, and same day, I just fill out a one page form, pay no amount of money, and say, I'm Charles Reed and I'm gonna be eating some crabs, come join me. I don't have to.
You can, it would be an event permit, and you could, yes, we could.
Is there a fee, or, I'm asking?
No, there's not a fee.
No fee.
So what time is the, I mean, what time is the office?
Our office hours are eight thirty to four thirty.
Okay, so as long as I'm making it, or, I guess not on the weekend, well, I could just ask for it in advance. So what I just described, the event as myself and a group of people that may accompany by random.
Well, the, the permit asks, you know, how many people you anticipate to be there, and what the event is, and, I mean, it's a very simple permit. Um.
It was just, I really didn't know, cause there's nothing laid out in the ordinance to describe how one would, what an event was, what an organization.
There is a fee if you're having, for instance, a wedding or something like that, but something you're describing, we would not charge a fee.
Okay.
What's the threshold for, aren't there different fees for?
Seventy five dollars for seventy five people or less, or, um, over seventy five is a hundred and fifty dollars. And that's something that we're gonna be getting back, circling back to. We tabled that a long time ago, um, to revise those fees.
So in theory, could I, as an individual, just me, go for the next three hundred and sixty four days, I wish to potentially?
We're not gonna issue a permit for an entire year.
No.
I just think within the legislative boundaries, because it's that open ended.
Would you, would you do it for a weekend? I mean, how do you, just out of curiosity?
It's just gonna be a specific date.
It's gonna be a date?
Yes.
Just seems like I should pay for it for something that really wasn't issued before, never was.
Well, and the authorities, which are the police and the liquor board, felt it was, we were in violation because our ordinance did not state it, that it was allowed. So, uh, we went through the process of how we would come up with what our guidelines were gonna be. They felt their decision was that we were outside of what we were, um, legally allowed to do.
Did they testify, um, when this was open for public comment? And I don't doubt that you had it in the paper or something, but I would've known if it was.
The Sheriff's Department did not testify.
Did the Alcohol Board come here and testify?
Um, we worked with them on what we were gonna draft.
Did anybody have any public comment on that?
We did not receive any.
No, I don't believe so.
Okay. Uh, I find it interesting that those two organizations were able to influence something so dramatic, um, and couldn't do it publicly, or even supply a clause for it. There's, it sounds familiar, they're just telling you you're doing something wrong and not.
It's state law that we have to go through the liquor board for permits.
Yeah, but I mean, in the absence of this, in this particular circumstance, we're not talking about.
We would've been, I mean, we could've made the decision to allow it at the Wharf specifically, um, anytime. Um, that was not the direction that the board went in. I mean, we decided to be able to monitor it and not have it just open ended. Um, I mean, they, what the liquor board and the police wanted was language that they could enforce
Yeah.
based on our decision.
Exactly.
So we are, we can make the decision of, um, whether we allow it, don't allow it, or allow it in specific instances. And we did allow it, um, but you have to have a permit.
So they just asked us to clarify our?
Right.
To update it and.
To the third option.
Sure.
I appreciate it. I thank you. It was very informative, and I'll just stop by before four thirty, whenever I want to have crabs and be my own person. But, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Anything else? Not, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Soon.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Here's a budget for each of you. Thank you.